And so. And John, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. That's nice to know. We can hear and be heard. So let's call this meeting to order and go around the table for the record, who is present and John, maybe we'll start with you remotely.
All right, John Wilson.
Present.
President.
He's going ahead.
Patreon sheets present.
Ed Fullford, present.
Greg Heyman, present.
And Nick Fowler.
And.
I mean, thank you, she's recording.
Thank you all for coming out on this stormy evening and thanks especially for Patreon for standing in and doing extra duty this evening. Our first. I'm sorry.
Sarah.
Did Sarah join? I only see John.
No. She's not in yet.
Yeah, I don't see Sarah.
There she is.
Oh, okay, great. Perfect timing. And we understand that Sarah's a little under the weather and doesn't wish to speak very much. But if Sarah, if you could give us a thumbs up or a hello to acknowledge your participation in the meeting.
I'm here, you guys, and I can talk a little bit more now, but I can't talk for long, so I may be putting some things in the chat.
Very good. We appreciate you joining us as well, even though you're a bit under. So our first agenda item is to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2024. They were not in our printed handouts, but they are on the online packet. If everyone has had a chance to review them, are there any edits or amendments to the minutes? The nun would entertain a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Very well. Any further discussion before calling for the vote? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any questions? Minutes are approved unanimously. And the primary topic of the evening is to provide feedback on the comprehensive plan and development plan outreach program. The slides were incorporated into our package and Patreon's going to fill in for Ms. Bush. And so we'll turn it over to Ms. Sheets.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. So I know that Shannon and you had a little get together to kind of talk about the approach to this meeting. So I don't know if you want to give a summary of what that was.
Well, it was very, very simple. It was everyone around here is not shy and so we would anticipate questions as we go along and to expect questions. So that was about it. We wanted to focus especially on making sure that the connection points to the planning commission were well established. And so Vice Chair Heyman and his code subcommittee is the primary working liaison to the sheets. Ms. Bush and the the comp plan review and so forth. Commissioner Struthers is on Vice Chair Heyman's team as well. But that is the primary working connection and it will come back to the full planning commission for like this evening for feedback into the into the process. But the actual sausage making and detail work will occur with Vice Chair Heyman's subcommittee.
Okay, perfect. That's a great startup. So the first set of pages, there's a set of maps and it's really just an in-depth example, visual example, the spatial analysis of equity to kind of show how we could visually express data as we gather public outreach information. And that's an example from what we talked about on page 18. So you can kind of move forward with that or refer back to it as we move forward. But on page 11 of 27, there is the beginning of the outline of the inclusive outreach plan. This is just an executive summary. There's lots of meat that's been put on this draft plan already, but we just want to be able to focus on the high level points. And so there is the document purpose, the context of that, and we want to get some feedback from you on the highlighted areas of this outline tonight, which are the engagement goals and principles, the priority audiences that we want to focus on. And I want to use the work that LC has done over the last six months as a really good example of what we'd like to replicate in other communities, primarily the unincorporated communities, and then some of the key messaging for communication. So the document purpose really is focused on, not only because the Department of Land Conservation Development, because it's trending and because of part of voluntary periodic review, is that there needs to be a really strong component on inclusivity, diversity, equity, and accessibility. And the acronym for that is IDEA. And the IDEA, behind IDEA is just into engage communities in more nuanced, non-traditional and new ways. So that's really the framework and the focus of this planning process.
Ben Meschitz, do you want interruption or would you like to go through the whole thing?
Go for it. Yeah.
So I shared this with Ms. Bush and I'll and I'll share it at risk of offending. And I don't mean this in any offensive way at all, but if there was one thing, there were several things that I concluded from the election season. One is that there are now terms that have loaded connotations. And I fully support the objectives of this plan, but using the word inclusive is one of those words that now carries more baggage than it did prior to the to the election season. And even the acronym IDEA, which is a great acronym.
Yep.
But it may carry connotations. And what I've seen, and I don't know if others have observed this, you lose the audience immediately if you use one of those terms. They don't listen to anything. And so I was a little concerned with the title, not the content, but the title of the presentation and was wondering if there could be within the working team, some additional brainstorming around naming it. Even something as lame as comprehensive outreach plan or something like that. I don't want to completely cave, but I also don't want to lose the audience before we start communicating with the audience.
Yeah, the topic's been both an internal team as well. So I absolutely appreciate that. And we could, if we have some time this evening, we could talk a little bit about that or we could send that back as a directive to the contractors for them to come up with some improved vernacular.
I would like to speak to that, Commissioner Fowler. I'm really glad that that there's an understanding of that. I was unsure how to bring that to the table from the other perspective of not wanting to block contact with part of the county. So I'm really grateful that you guys have brought this up and I do think that it should, you know, if it needs to be addressed at this level, we could look at it if that would be helpful to others. Or it would be fine to just include that in, you know, hopeful edits.
So I don't have any brilliant names. It's more just feedback as a concern that I really don't want to lose the audience before we have a chance to communicate with them.
No, I appreciate that.
That's wise.
I like the use of the term communities.
Okay.
But all Benton County communities, Benton County's communities, whatever.
Community is a wonderful word.
Yeah, it's a wonderful thing. Yeah.
I think they call them buzzwords because they move so fast.
That's a good old reliable though, community. That one's been around.
Yeah. It has. It's good. So I've noted that as an example for the our consultants so that they can look at that wording. I that's a great comment. On page 12 is a little bit more about the project context. And we've talked about this at this table a few times. And it does allude a little bit more to the underrepresented. And so there's some other similar language, I think, to what we just talked about. So we'll take a look at that and make sure that that's kind of filters applied to the entire document, right? But it also has a timeline graphic there and you can see that we were trying to go a little farther along because we wanted to start the design of the outreach program beginning in August. And while there was a planning process that went into that, we are about six weeks behind. And so we're going to be finding some ways to kind of try to work efficiently, cut out a couple staff meetings and such, and really try to accelerate the internal review so that we can try to catch up on the schedule a little bit. But I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns about the timeline.
Could you tell me where we are in each of those calls?
Sure. So I'm sorry.
What page are we on in the packet?
Yeah, we're on page 12.
We're on page 12. Actually, depends on which packet.
Yeah, which?
Mine says. And it also says page two.
I'm sorry. So of the plan, it's page, I'll use the plan page numbers. I'm sorry, John. Page two of the plan.
Which is at the top?
No, at the bottom.
At the bottom. Yes. So the pagination of the packet is at the top, the plan at the bottom.
Got it.
Thank you, number two. Oh, I'm so sorry. This is not helping me. All right, so.
Okay. So we're on page two of the of the project. So that's project context and the timeline. Okay. And I only had one other. I don't know. My question actually relies, is this where we're, in addition to responding to the packet itself? Is this where we ask questions about the methodology? Because the only reason I say that is that the packet starts with these three maps of the county making, talking about access barriers and history. And I didn't know if there was a specific, a specific methodology that was used to develop that. And and if it gets, if that's too involved, I can do that offline. I just was curious if that was something we're supposed to respond to as well.
You're welcome to to talk about the methodology. The consultants have used this methodology pretty consistently in recent years and have refined it. But where it comes from is from the American Community Survey from the US Census Bureau. So that's where the data comes from.
Okay. And are those are those are the are the boundaries on these maps? Are these the census? Like the large census block boundaries or are they just boundaries created by the data?
They are boundaries created by the data. And they're not meant really to have, there's just supposed to be a visual example of the types of data that you'll see as opposed to an example of something to analyze or interpret this evening.
Well, that's a good thing because there's a negative correlation between access and participation, which I wanted to address.
Absolutely. So they're talking about underrepresented areas. We're talking about where the areas, I can't remember if they're darker colors or lighter. And I'm sorry, Shannon is more familiar with the maps, but those are areas that would be more vulnerable to access issues and such.
Right. And but then the history of participation. So I looked at where my my home is. So we have one of the lowest accesses and one of the lowest. What is it? Barrier, one of the highest barriers. So we have one of the greatest histories of participation. So I thought that leaves, then the conversation left that topic. And I thought, well, we could learn something from this somehow. Why waste the opportunity? But if if what I think I hear you're saying is these are just colored pieces of paper showing how the consultant plans to present information in the future. My concern is that it doesn't make, this doesn't make any sense.
Right. It's just raw data. There's no analysis, anything of that nature. Yeah. And so they're going to be taking the feedback that we get from the American, American Community Survey, other census data that's refined and kind of qualified from the feedback that we get from the different communities. Then the feedback that we do get will be kind of the quantity and the quality of the feedback that we get from the different ones. And then they're going to be doing kind of a data-driven scenario planning. So there'll be correlations that are made and analyses that are made so that they can try to have better strategies for those types of communities.
I totally understand. However, when I look at where my house is, it goes from, I think, Crystal Lake Drive to Monroe to the summit of the coast range. Crystal Lake, the diversity, the diversity of community there is is very large. And my area, I have, we have a sense of community and a cohesion as a community. So those concerns may reverberate in the future for this kind of analysis and interpretation.
Yeah, no, I think that's part of that qualification process. So you show where where are these hotspots of community that have developed and how do you how do you outreach with with the barriers, with the access issues, with the underrepresentation? How do you best connect with that community?
So that's what I have personal experience with. And so I'm looking forward to the opportunity to discuss that later on. I did have a question previous about where we are in this.
Yeah.
Which is page two.
Yeah. So we're, right now, we're, we're kind of, we're to the left of of the timeframe, because what it's showing you is when we're doing actively doing the public outreach, that's when we're going to be on the timeline.
Oh, I see. So no wonder it makes.
Right now, this is just the draft that's going to tell us how we're going to be doing the outreach. Yeah.
Just following up on, I'm, first of all, this is kind of a bug about statistics. I suspect that the areas are predefined because if we're done by data, the zones would look different based on a different element. They're identical for all three elements. So I don't know what they are. Maybe precincts or something like that. But there's some way in which the the areas within this, the county are defined by something other than the data that we're actually looking at.
That could be very true. Again, I apologize.
No, that's fine. I'm just, I just, I want more information from them.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So that's one of the things I want to know. I also find, I mean, some, I mean, either we don't include them or we say, well, what does this mean? You know, and, you know, I find, I mean, I find it interesting that the first two data elements have to do with basically technology access and sort of cultural barriers. I think it's the second one, if I interpret it right, are pretty consistent. You know, the same areas seem to have the challenges on both of those. But when I get to the one called history, which maybe I don't understand, it's the inverse. I don't, I don't understand how the the areas of the county that have the greatest number of barriers are also, according to this, less vulnerable.
I think it suggests we should I don't want to be, I don't want to be too inflammatory. I'm making a joke. Burn all the cell towers because then people participate more. That's what it looks like to me. Okay, people don't have access to the internet. So they're playing, so they're, so they're, they're participating in government instead.
Well, I don't want to guess. I want to know.
I don't. I agree with you.
I don't know why. Because it's just, it's just the opposite. I'm very curious about this one little zone along just below North Albany. Data in the middle of the area where everything else looks pretty good. I don't know. That's just a, why? I don't know why.
So in the absence of data, my conclusion about my community is that the reason my community has high participation is because we are, we are highly, we are a very vital community that interacts together a great deal. And we participate with volunteerism and leadership. And I, and that to me, you know, in the absence of data, I can say that just as certainly as the consultants can. So.
Right. No, I can appreciate all that as well. And again, the way it was explained to me, and I, I mean, but this was supposed to just be a visual spatial example of the types of data that will be collected and what what it would look like. And I don't know what the backside methodology is. But I absolutely agree that there is an expectation that we will find out and have that explained.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I understand this is preliminary. I didn't, I didn't want to sound negative. I'm just, it made me curious.
Right.
I want to go, what does this mean?
Well, that's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
Can I, can I muddy the waters further?
Sure.
And I'm with you, Greg, about getting too detailed when it's not time to be that detailed. But when I read through, when I looked at these maps, I had similar concerns to what Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Hammond have expressed. And and looking at it from LC's perspective, the maps, but also the data, including concerns about making sure that we get in touch with who we need to get in touch with, right? I see huge places where LC is not included in that. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to get what's in my head out onto the table. So if I were to have worked or were to work with this group of people creating this document, I would just point at a spot and I would say, okay, so you've missed this important thing because you don't how to access my community. And you need this. There's also huge things like that LC has no American Community Survey data. We already know that from our local development work. That's a whole complicated story that I won't bore you with. But we have no data from that source for LC. And we have no mapped representation of LC on the county maps because we're unincorporated. Do you see where I'm going with this? So maybe the unincorporated communities need to have a very specific approach. And it may be that the same approach could be used in the different communities that are unincorporated. And we may need different ones in the different places. I have told some community leaders that I that I know in our various little unincorporated places out here in the west part of the county like Blodgett and Summit, that this project's going to be happening and that they were going to want to be ready to show up at the table with some ideas. And haven't heard anything past that. I will stop now. We don't need to necessarily address these now. But at some point in time, if there's supposed to be a deeper understanding within this document about how to do outreach in the various communities, I already see that there are glaring. What's, what's the right word? It's missing.
I wanted to dovetail on omission. Sorry, Sarah. I mean, to step on you.
No, it's okay.
I wanted, I wanted to actually follow on Sarah's comments because I think she's right. Where the unincorporated parts of the county are decentralized versus our incorporated areas, Adair, Monroe, Philomath, Carvallos, of course. North Albany, to the extent that it's attached to and is is managed by the city of Albany, but that there are centralized locus, you know, where there's a locus for a lot of this to happen, but it's in those decentralized rural and unincorporated areas of the county that are going to be the most important to reach just as well. And maybe even more important because the voices need to, you know, are more difficult to be heard from. But and again, that's a little hard to tell from these maps. And I liked how you pointed that. You pointed out that both, you know, where you are in Alpine, that that there are many people that are engaged and involved and then you show a high level of engagement. And that's, and that's a wonderful atrophy to have for your community. But I want to make sure that we can make this, you know, this part of this phase or this project has the level of awareness and outreach that it that it that it reaches those nooks and crannies, as it were, for the community.
So I totally agree with what John and Sarah said. And I, I read a statement on page three of the document. It said, guiding principles for engagements were developed during an inclusive outreach planning session. They can be used to evaluate and provide accountability. Well, who who was that and when was that? They allude to county agencies that were involved. There's only one county agency in my area as far as I know, and that's the Little Health Center in Monroe. And those people don't live in the area and they're there maybe three, four days a week. So I have concerns about that statement. They were developed during an inclusive outreach planning session. I would think that if there were going to be an inclusive outreach planning session, volunteers who are well-known in my community would have been engaged. And I don't think they were. I know I wasn't.
Yeah, I think that the the meetings that they were referring to were the ones were the two or three sessions that Shannon were staffed to with, the consultant was involved, where they used the health center and the housing subcommittee folks. And there's a group of about 20 different stakeholders that were agency representatives. I'm not, not the, this isn't the community outreach part. Remember, this is the planning for the outreach part.
Right.
So that's what they're referring to.
I know, but they aren't. I don't see in this document words that make me feel comfortable, that the people who were involved at that stage are knowledgeable enough to include all the nooks and crannies, as John, John called them.
Okay.
I need to know. I mean, I don't know that it doesn't. I don't know that it does. I would like to be convinced because one of the things I think is important to say is I consider this activity very important. And I wish that it weren't happening at this particular point in history. I mean, I feel as though we're in such a volatile transitory point that if we don't do this right, it it could create a trajectory that would be unintended.
Okay. Can I?
Add that, I could. I know, and I'm, I'd like to see as well what Shannon, her invite list, because I think Greg and I were both in there. But I don't know what made us be part of the selection versus others not being part of the selection. Well, I can answer part of that in in that your two subcommittees have sausage making responsibility associated within this process. And so you're, you're kind of on the inner circle of Shannon's distribution list. When, when I looked at Shannon's distribution list, it was very, very lengthy, but I didn't go through name by name.
People or something.
Yeah. And of those who were able to attend, it was a large group, but it may not have been, you know, everybody. But it was a big group.
Yeah. Well, they answered that. I think, you know, any project like this can suffer from both ends. It could become overly granular and basically kill itself, or it can be so superficial and nobody pays attention to it. So I appreciate the fact we're trying to find that place in the middle where we can get, so we have as much sort of granular input as the process can handle. I don't, don't overload it. So I just want to be careful. What I, what I mean, it's very, very global, but I think the the maps, for me, at least tell me. And I think the conclusion is that no single process is going to work to reach all of the constituents. We're going, I mean, that's clear from all three of those maps. There is not one way to do this. And I appreciate that because I think that's a really important starting place for this work. Oh, we're all going to, we're going to do it all this way. I mean, this map says there is no just one way. It's going to take different approaches for different audiences. And so I appreciate that.
And one of the things that Shannon was intending to do was to make an ask of And one of the things that Shannon was intending to do was to make an ask of the Planning Commission. Uh, in our our members of the Planning Commission willing to host those local sessions and the planning process associated with it and be champions of those customizations that are necessary to reach all the pockets and so forth. Uh, so I I excuse me, Miss, if I stolen your thunder at the end.
That is, that is the, um, the.
But that was going to be the the ask in discussion is.
The answer is yes.
Yes. And I saw that there was only two public workshops. And they haven't decided where.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's just, um, they're going to kind of train the trainers. That's what that's for. Um, so they're going to be, the consultants are going to give us a whole suite of tools for us to customize and use um, how we feel that's fit, how we localize those and how the planning commission decides to utilize those tools for individualized communities. That's what those two workshops are for. We, there's not a number on how many workshops that this committee or other, we can pull in other volunteers from other departments and such um, to help with. Um, and so that's, that's a, that's a common question that I had as well as beginning of the process.
I was really impressed, by the way, with Shannon and the contractor, how there were all these different nonprofits and all these different communities. They listed a ton of them. A lot of them I've never even heard of. And I was like, what? That sounds like a good one, right? And so they were brainstorming. So I think, you know, the planning piece had a sort of a narrow group, but I think the outreach, I mean, they were naming groups that were, I I think he'll be, he'll be happy.
And and this final product will have a summary of that whole process in it. So we'll have the contacts, who they represented, the viewpoints that came out of that process, the decision points. All of that will be represented in this plan. But again, this is just a kind of an outline of the things that Shannon was hoping that we would get this body's input about moving forward. But I understand it's really challenging if you don't have that background context. So I appreciate the questions.
Commissioner Hammond, I I like that word you're using, granular. Can you explain what you mean? Just fifteen seconds worth?
I don't, I didn't, I can't hear the questions.
So you you keep mentioning having the process be as granular as it is possible for it to be. What do you mean when you say granular?
The weeds. What does it mean?
Yeah.
In that context.
Yeah, I just, you know, um, you know, the 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 most granular processes is to sit down and have a conversation with every resident of that county. That would be the most granular process. We would, we would destroy ourselves trying to pull that off. So the question is, how granular do we need to be in order to actually get valid understandings uh, of what we need and what we should be doing as a county? And and to push it beyond that will probably could burden the process to such an extent that we never actually come up with any answers or solutions. So so it's always, you know, it's always a to build a process to figure out how granular you have to go for the outcome to be valid. And and so that's, does, it's not new, you know, it's not a per- perspective that's unique to me. It's the way we do canvassing, we do survey work, you know, and and, you know, sometimes we get it wrong and sometimes we don't. But I think but that's, um, that's, I think what I'm trying to represent is a perspective that says, let's make sure that we're granular enough to be able to come up with valid um, valid outcomes and out and and outcomes that can be broadly accepted by the audience uh, of this information. So.
Exactly. Right. Very, thank you for defining that. Um, I would would say in response to that, that I think rural areas and underserved, other underserved communities within the county are best accessed in very different ways than you would do outreach like in Corvallis or Philomath. Um, and so I would suggest that there would be, you know, sort of a two, two armed approach of, I think, um, Commissioner Wilson said it well when he said for the decentralized groups of people who who don't have access to um, the avenues of power, you know, casually as people do that are in a more centralized and organized, you know, community that exists, whether it's a physical community like LC or a community of uh, other underserved populations that might not have a geographic location. So Petra, in light of what kind of outreach process we can do, are, what are our budgetary constraints? What does that look like?
Uh, we don't have a budget um, for the the process. Um, we, well, we have seventy-five thousand dollars from the consultants to provide us with some support. Um, we have not infinite, um, but ongoing through May um, in-kind staff support that's sufficient. Um, if staff comes back to work. Um, and then we also have commitment from other departments. Um, Health and Wellness Committee has a whole committee of fifteen folks um, from different departments, an inter-departmental committee that has um, health parks. It has representation from almost all the different departments. And they have actually provided us an additional ten thousand dollars from their uh, budget to uh, put together a website. And also they are, a good majority of them are skilled facilitators as well. And so they've provided quite a lot of additional um, uh, commitment for in-kind support. So I think we have sufficient staff support to get through this process. Um, it's yet to be defined, um, but I think most of it will be handled in kind, Sarah. And I think, I think we'll be fine.
And did you say, was that the Health Department was going to help with the website?
It has five folks that are really interested in helping us um, with the facilitation process.
Norvalis, thank you for explaining that.
So that led to a question that I had that's been bothering me and or interesting me, I guess, is how does, is it, this, the granularity issue is what raised it up. One person, one vote, how are decisions going to be made about what kind, about the feedback that is given? Um, and it concerns me as a resident of Alpine because there were two county outreach activities within my memory that in which there were sixty people in a room uh, giving the county feedback. And it turned, they used lots of interesting communication tools. It turned out that the community itself was very cohesive in its values and goals. But when the county came back to the community and presented their report or their conclusions, it was entirely backwards. So we all wondered what the hell, what did we participate for? Because they made up their mind or they talked to someone who wasn't at the meeting. And that person's or that those person's votes or feedback won the day and ours didn't. So it, that needs to be clear. How are the decisions made by the number of people you talk to? Or the number of people who tell you things that you like or that are easy to implement? Or, uh, you know, how are decisions going to be made using this outreach?
That's to be a great question for the consultants. I think on a specific, on my micro level. But generally, what we're, the comprehensive plan is is a set of values, right? So it's going to be, not everyone shares the same value. So it it may be a um, like a gradient of of values. And it's just like, for the most part, and then when we come back, it's it's a failed public outreach process. If you come back in the community, the majority of the community is saying that's not what we said. And sometimes that that is, that's a failed process. And I can't speak to that one, but i- if if it happened the way that you said it did, that's, that's not how it's supposed to happen. Um, so you come back iteratively, say, is this what, is this what the community is saying? And if you say no, then we go back at it until we get it right, you know, um, and that's, that's what happens. And so the, and then one thing that I determined to do is because the community is so diverse, we need to try to look at the micro environments in it. Um, especially the unincorporated communities that have less structure, is that we're going to have annexes or chapters on the back of the comp plan. So the comp plan is going to have to have the consistency from all the different communities that roll up into a series of values that meet the statewide planning goals. And there's a lot of, there's some top-down stuff there too, because there's regulatory things that you have to meet in that stuff. But there's going to be a roll-up too of of the united and consistent community values that go into the comprehensive plan. But there's going to be also specific chapters that come in the comprehensive plan for each of the communities that individualize those. Is it going to represent every single person's opinion? No. But, you know, hopefully it will have enough unique identifiers and branding and values associated with those unincorporated communities if we do this in a not, it, it, don't use the inclusive word, but you know, in in the way where we have as many voices at the table as possible.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, and Petra, and I hate, at the risk of repetition, I'm sorry. You said at the beginning, as we started this, that prepared this draft packet for us. You were looking for us to provide feedback, and not only just on the packet itself, but on the highlighted. And on my packet, I see that there are some key terms or key headings that have been highlighted in a kind of a gold. Is that what you were referring to in terms of the the specific feedback that you or the areas in this draft that you were looking for for specific feedback?
Yes, my goal is to get to page three.
Okay. And I don't want to, I don't want to prevent that.
Okay. So, um, no, but this is good because again, you know, without the the background context and having an understanding of that foundational stuff, it's really hard to answer these other questions. So I appreciate that. And so on chapter three, um, or excuse me, on page three, the bottom of page three and the plan itself, and the engagement goals and principles. The consultants kind of had provided us with uh, kind of what they think is their working best number one goal. But I want, we wanted to check in with you to see is, do you think this encapsulates kind of the umbrella goal of a pub, a good, solid public outreach process? And if it doesn't, again, let's not wordsmith, but conceptually, are there any values or concepts that aren't captured here? And it's not that we can't add it, add a goal or anything of that nature, but we're just trying to keep this as high level as possible. And just for the public or whomever may else may be listening, who I think is no one, but it does say engage the public frequently on current and future planning issues and projects using a broad range of mediums, platforms, and approaches.
Right.
We like it.
It's good.
It does. It sounds great.
So I was a professional editor, so wordsmithing is like, it's just like driving me crazy.
I know, I'm the same way.
What's public and other priority populations? What the heck does that mean even? That's the first bullet, guiding principles, communication, accountability.
Let's move on to number two. The guiding principles, so communication, accountability. I I'm, I'm not sure. Okay, so create an engagement program that includes regular feedback loops and the public and other priority populations. So, um, besides the public would be other stakeholders, but um, one thing that folks are concerned about stakeholders like other um, nonprofits, organizations, jurisdiction representatives, the state, things of that nature. Um, one thing that uh, came up actually in the health group was that they don't like the word stakeholder because they think that's not, no longer a PC term.
I noticed that too, and it's used throughout this document.
Yeah, so I think that was an attempt at looking at an alternative language. And just because um, the his, the etymology of stakeholder is that it, like a picketer, was like railing against something because you had, you were um, just uh, absolutely in favor of one concept and not, you didn't have your ears open to any other concepts. Um, or you only had one issue that you were concerned about. And so that's not necessarily what a modern-day stakeholder is anymore. And while we use that constantly in the planning world, they're trying to find ways to move away from that language. So they, they thought about perhaps testing priority populations. I I don't know how that plays with y'all, but um, maybe stakeholders are going to come back, uh, just because people don't really understand what other things mean.
Well, I was just going to add that I think that what we don't want to do is allow the loudest voices in the room to drown out those other uh, voices that need to be heard. And I think that when we use stakeholder, and as you described to Petra, it tends to, stakeholder tends to be hottest voice in the room.
Yeah, one of the things that the person that said it was a Native American, and I think she said that that stakeholder meant the Native Americans, that you were giving away their land. Then if you were a stakeholder, you were a white landowner.
There's that one too, like driving a stake on a claim.
On a claim. And so when you use that term, it it really defends the Native Americans. And so she was uh, loud, it kind of hit home for me, but um, I want to be sensitive to that. But yeah, certain things, I hear you talking about that.
Yeah. And that, that's, that's going to be one of those things that comes out of a success, one of those unintended realities that comes out of one of these processes when we're trying to get lots of different perspectives, is that you're going to hear different perspectives on different words. And we're going to have to address those things during this process collectively and have those tough conversations.
Avoiding DEI, right?
Right.
And maybe stakeholders.
And idea and stakeholders.
But, but, uh, but I I agree with Evelyn. It's like, if we use a term like priority populations, what, what are we saying?
You just blocked your audit.
I see that. Sorry.
She went to grabs. Well, the current understanding of stakeholder is a, is an interest that I don't want to lose in this. And that is person who has a stake in the outcome of this work. A person who who is impacted by and therefore cares about the outcome of that work. That is the contemporary understanding of the word. So I want to make sure we don't use that.
But we don't want to, so when I hear the word stakeholder in that context, it's the people who have the most money involved. And that's not what, and and, you know, that won't fit for me.
Well, I don't know where that came from, but that isn't what.
A stakeholder is someone who has um, an in- an interest, whether it's financial or personal.
Well, an interest in the outcome. It doesn't mean, because isn't an interest as in an investment in or or it's.
Well, when you're talking about land use, it could be.
Well, okay. I don't want to lose the concept that there are variety of entities, groups, interests, areas, that that will be greatly impacted by this work. And I want to make sure they are in this and they're, and are not just the general public. Okay.
So who, who else would it be? Like nonprofits? Is that, I've heard that term, but.
Well, I.
Yeah, other community groups, nonprofits, it could be formal, informal. Uh, uh, it it could be church group, it could be the playground, it could be a birth-to-three group of of parents. Those are the public. Those are the public.
But they have specific interests.
Yeah, right. So that's, I think it's, interested parties might be another one that's, that's used commonly, what have you. But I think maybe, maybe the message to the um, our consultant is just to make sure that we provide enough space to have those conversations about how we use our language and how we end up.
Right.
There's some consensus. And then when we have some issues around those things, that we can, we can talk it out and make sure that, that we reflect, um, you know, some collective decision-making on how we speak to the product. I don't know.
So I really think this goes back to, you know, our chair's initial comment is, let's make sure that we don't use language that shuts down the conversation we're trying to have.
Right.
Actually, I know, um, I brought this up to my family when I first heard it, because I was like, I've never heard this before. We shared comments back and forth. One of the pieces here, it talks about uh, the gambling world where he's described someone who placed the stake on a bed. But down here at the bottom, it says, however, people question the use of the term stakeholder because of its colonialist origins and the power imbalance it can imply, the term can also be problematic because it assumes that only stakes with monetary worth are legitimate. Some suggestions use more. Some suggestions use more inclusive terms like collaborator, community partner, interested parties.
Good.
So we're on the right track. Well, that's good. So it's, it's not, we've already had that conversation in that, in those kickoff meetings. I, I don't know the exact reasoning behind those two words right there, but again, that's another good thing to remember. It made my knee jerk. So I like, okay, if it makes my knee jerk, maybe it makes other people's knee jerk, right? And it did, and it will, I'm sure. So on those other bullet points, are there other guiding principles and values associated with those guiding principles that you think are missing from this process?
Well, it may be implied, I don't see it implied, but I would welcome arguments that it is implied. That, this kind of is similar to what Commissioner Lee brought up. People need to understand the process. If, if we show up with a group of interested community partners, see, I'm, I'm doing my homework, everyone. I'll, I'll, I'll speak the language. And we just ask them, you know, what they'd like their community to look like 20 years from now? And we get a few answers. Has the community had time to think about this? Has the community had time to talk about this amongst themselves? And really evaluate what would be the best kind of future for their community? And of course, always going to be an argument at some level in a community. But nonetheless, you could get something of more value if people have a chance to go through a process rather than just have what is called quote unquote outreach, which is really just, you know, throwing, well, no, I won't use a rural metaphor, that is just, just kind of getting little random pieces of input from various people. And then pretending like that has a meaningful voice for the whole community.
Would it be fair, Sarah, to capture that in terms of messaging to the consultants to emphasize with these, with the community's process over outreach?
Can you say that? What do you want to say to them? Say that again?
A, a longer range process and relationship over a point in time outreach.
Yes. Well, I'm really trying to, to emphasize the preparation phase for the, the interested parties to give them time to actually come up with something of value to say. You know, like there were several things mentioned in the list of things to do, like, oh, set up a table and have surveys that people can take. That's a great way to get some random input, but has that given an individual community time to talk about and think about what would really improve their community? And I can guarantee it, and I suppose that you all know this, if you go out into any of these communities in the, the, the fringes of your county and you talk to those communities, those people know what that community needs. Right? So this, this great opportunity for them to be able to try to, to have some of those things that they need take place. And so I, I just, I guess we just keep circling around this idea that we make sure that voices get heard that aren't the centralized voices. And for me, I think a big piece of that is there being a time period between when the subject is introduced to the individual communities of the county and when they give some response. Particularly, I would say, in the rural areas where we don't have organized groups that can respond for the community.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I hear you too. And this relates to another comment that I would like to make. It's the same comment, only slightly from a different perspective. It, it's about words, how important words are. And it reminds me of, of this past election. But I, you know, I made some notes. If you go to, if you go to a meeting, a, a little, a community meeting at Alpine Community Center and you, and you show up and say, board of directors has the county, is it not Board of Electors?
Here?
Yeah, the county commissioners have priorities to deal with, you know, housing is our, is our priority and homelessness is our priority. What do you think about this? The answers that you get in that meeting, the focus, the interests are all going to be, yes, housing, we need to, we, our values about housing are going to be expressed entirely differently than if you went and said, we're all sitting around talking, you know, gosh, you know, climate's changing and you know, we're not going to be able to get food from California so much anymore. And we really, we really are looking for food products and we really want to be forward thinking in terms of water and food. You're going to have a conversation about values after that that is entirely different.
Yeah.
So you can essentially plant seeds that grow and, and the conversations will, and, and the values expressed will, will be different. People respond. So one of the things I was thinking about in the election was the people who were criticizing the, the poll takers, because one of the questions they never asked was where do you get your news? And that's why the polls failed so badly to predict the outcome of, of elections. So where do you, who, how, what seeds are you planting in these conversations? And how are those going to result in expressions of goals, values and concerns? So, you know, we, we have major, if, if you, you need to talk about things, about a huge variety of things in my area, you would talk about our rural fire protection district. Man, they used to have maybe 300 calls a year. They've got two calls, at least two calls every day now. And that's going to change. So how's that going to impact our goals, values and concerns about our community? And that would get forgotten if, if the topic of conversation started out, well, you know, the board, the county commissioners are really concerned about housing and homelessness. It's different, you know, it just starts your brain going a different track. So words matter. And it's comprehensive and it's a plan. It's a plan for the future and it needs to be comprehensive. That's one of the things that I, one of the, I've already gotten to page, you know, you guys are all behind. I'm, I'm on page whatever. I can't even read the page. Yeah, anyway, so I'm sorry to take so much time, but that's, that's how I feel about these things.
Yeah, no, I think that's important. So something else we talked about in those, in those kickoff meetings as well as some of the concepts that the consultants have is this kind of more playful ways. We're, we're not going to talk in the acronyms at the groups. We are going to talk in value statements. One of the potential activities is where you just throw out a whole bunch of random things like Legos and shapes and things of that nature. And it's like, you know, build your favorite first childhood memory. And that's supposed to kind of start getting you to think about what made you feel satisfied and happy, you know, and what are the values and family values that you might've had? And it starts this conversation about that. And so that's the starting point for having those conversations about values as opposed to say, hey, we need housing, something like that. So I mean, there are alternative ways. And I think that that kind of gets to what you're saying is that you have conversations about framing questions and value statements as opposed to topics. Is that what you're saying?
I think so.
Okay.
I appreciate the bullet number five. I think so much of community feedback gets missed, misunderstood and miscommunicated because we don't understand the level, the areas of impact we can have or the level of impact we can have. And I saw, so I just think one of the things that's really important is to help people. Because I think sometimes communities think, oh, we can change anything. And, you know, and you're having a nice fluid conversation and then half of what they said doesn't happen. And it's because it was outside of the boundary of the work. And so I think it's really important for, I think it's fair to the communities, to the people providing input for them to understand what, what are the parameters of this work? This is, yeah. And I think, I think that's what bullet number five is trying to say, and I just want to emphasize that.
I concur, and I feel like that dovetails with what I was saying about the, giving the communities time to do a little prep work.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any other comments on the guiding principles? Anything missing? And you're welcome to think on a dream on it. Get back to me.
Yeah, Petra, the maps, to define the geography of where engagement is happening. I'm not sure what they mean. But because the maps that we've seen so far don't represent our unincorporated communities, there's, I feel like there's already a hole in that process.
Yes, so noted. It's not representative of true data. It's just, it's just supposed to be a spatial, a visualization of the fact that we want to use data-driven information through community outreach to spatially recognize our results. That, and I'm not articulating that very well, but you're right, they're, they're flawed.
Well, talk about losing people at the beginning of a conversation.
Yeah.
Show them a map of the county they live in and they aren't on it.
I, I agree. I, I think, Sarah, that's, that's my bad. I, Shannon surely had a method in her mind for how she's going to present that information. I don't know what that was. So I'm just, I'm doing my best guess at what her thought process was.
You, madam, are a trooper. Here you are. The one woman banned from the guest planning department.
Yeah, I was, I was telling Commissioner Hayman, I feel like the Paul Bunyan of community development this week. Just whacking through everything. Anyway, okay, can we move on to priority audiences? This wasn't, actually, one of the comments that I had, and again, it's about the vernacular, it's like people, the poverty line, we don't really talk about that anymore. We talk about limited income. So I mean, that's another, you know, those are some of the things that we've already provided some comments on at the staff level. But the, the third item that's on the bottom of page six, or I'm sorry, page six is the audience brainstorm and power analysis with context experts. I really can't speak to this because I don't know, understand the methodology behind it. So I apologize. I, I can't really speak to the backside of this public participation framework. But I know it's been scientifically vetted and nationally known. And I can certainly get you a narrative with some more background information, if that'd be helpful. So my, my apologies on this one. And I think we've already talked a little bit about identifying the priority audiences and hard to reach analysis. And again, I have a disparate tertiary understanding of what those, but they, they do want to use the data for the places that we have data because you want to use foundational data where you have quantitative information to use. But like you're saying, Sarah, a lot of the unincorporated areas don't have enough census data to come to any conclusions. And that's why you want that public outreach to be able to have enough information to want to, to qualify the quantitative information and then to be able to pull both of those types of data together to have a more robust analysis. So here's some examples of some of those data, right? So access barriers in history. I think these are three examples. There, this is not a comprehensive analysis. They're just three examples of things that we will want to look at or have our consultants look at to develop some tools to look at correlations and best practice strategies that match up with those types of communities.
I understand what you're saying about having data as a baseline. A useful map would be one that shows the areas where there is not census data. Right? Because we get stuck, Alsey gets, for instance, included in that east of Philoma thing.
Yes.
That is supposedly Alsey and is not Alsey. A big portion of it is, is rural Philoma. So there are census tracts, there are tax, you know, there's all these different ways we can look at these things. But one way we can look at them, it is actually the communities that exist, incorporated or not, within the county. And somehow getting those onto a map that talks about the future of the county. Because hopefully we still get to be here and maybe we get to participate in what the future looks like for our little communities that we live in. I mean, this tension is, I was thinking about it today. When we interact with the county as an unincorporated community and we're, we're on somebody's to-do list, something, right? But it's our home. It's our home. It's where we have our families, where we have our community. And I understand that the unincorporated issue adds a layer of complexity that wouldn't exist, a layer, the matrix of complexity that wouldn't exist otherwise. But this is actually a town. We actually have an identity, right? Whether we're on the map or not. And unfortunately for those east of the summit, we're out here. And we would like to be able to have some say in our future. So I will get off my, my soapbox and put it away. Thank you.
I'm applauding, Sarah. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we love your soapbox.
There will be lots of maps, lots of maps that show, that show that the community to Sarah. And, and as you saw, the, the last round, we did community solutions out there in Alsey too, is the new zoning, the zoning districts, and there'll be recommendations for changing those zoning districts and all of that business in, you know, the chapter for Alsey. So there will be more maps than you'll ever want to know.
Well, that, that's fabulous. That's just what people need to see because you figured out we're, we're not complete, completely without knowledge of these things out here. You've learned, right? What we don't know is how to have positive effect on our situation the best that we can.
Right.
What we need is information and access.
Yeah. And I just wanted to point out again that, you know, Alsey has done a lot of this work already this year. That's why we wanted to go out to Alsey first because they're so well situated. You've gone through your qualitative analysis. You have all your contacts, you're cohesive, you have the nonprofits, you have the media outlets, all of that is there. You have your value statements and your priority capital improvement projects. So I mean, you're very well situated just to have a little bit more nuanced approach for the folks to come out and just say, hey, we want to check with you to say, is this, what, what you're telling us, is this accurate with what we've collected from, from your community? And so we're kind of at the second stage with Alsey where we're not, where we haven't really started with the rest of the communities. So we really do appreciate all the work and have enjoyed spending so much time out there this year. Are there any other comments on that section? Okay, I, I do understand that the maps are problematic and I'll go to a statement that clarifies better than I'm able to the purpose of those this evening.
Right. Yes, that was, it was just a, one of those knee jerks. Less access, more barriers, more participation. That's interesting.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
So Petra, if you're going to move on to the next section of key messages or communication, key messages being highlighted. One of the things that stood out to me is that there are three items that don't have, or there are three questions which are, which are posed, but not necessarily provided a description. And I didn't know, is that something that the consultants were looking at? The planning commission to sort of flesh out, or is this something that's, again, collaborative with your consultants and all the other data they have collected?
My understanding is that the focus was on staff is, you know, how deeply do we want to go into the, into this, in this outline of the community outreach strategy? Do we need to spend much time on these questions? My understanding is that the focus was on staff is, you know, how deeply do we want to go into the into this in this outline of the community outreach strategy? Do we need to spend much time on these questions? I'm I have my own opinion, but I won't share it. I mean, I thought if you want to weigh in on whether or not you think we need to spend a lot of time on these questions, just in the outline for the outreach that we're going to do. I'd be happy to get your feedback on those.
I think, you know, you start in the direction you want to go, so. Those are real key questions.
The comment that I would have is under how does the comprehensive plan impact me? There there is a kind of a cascade of plans that eventually gets to the code. And and so I would have expected, how does a comprehensive plan impact me? To to see the line of sight from a comprehensive plan to implementation at the land use level through code.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments? Is it generally, especially that you you'd like to see some response to those questions and the staff working with the consultants on developing descriptors for that?
I think so. That's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else?
I also have a comment on the on why is Benton County doing this process now? It says the last, it's the last sentence, similarly, the development code should provide for regulations that result in current community interests and goals. And I disagree with that statement really vehemently. I think that that's much too transitory, especially when we're in such a volatile time. It really needs to be not what current interests are. This is comprehensive and a plan for the future, so it needs to be current values and goals, but not current interests, community, community values and goals, not current interests.
Values and goals, not interests. Okay.
Lovely, lovely, Evelyn.
Yeah, well said, Evelyn. Thank you. I I also wanted to echo Chair Fowler in that in this, in here is, you know, we have, we we talked about the comprehensive plan. But in 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 all of these areas, and especially where Chair Fowler highlighted, is that we also need to see that through line as to if we're developing community values and goals. Those will be, you know, we need to see how that direct line goes into the, you know, the changes to our development code, which reflect those updated community values and goals. So I don't know if there's any better, I don't, because I I see development code used in that section. Why is Benton County doing this process now? But I don't know that I've seen it, and it's not early on, and then that seems to be the only reference to it. But and and maybe we're supposed to assume that it's intuitive, but I don't know that we should expect that.
It's part of the answer to how will this change what is currently in place? It it goes through to the development code, and that development code costs you money or determines who your neighbors are, or, you know, how many neighbors you have, or, you know, how much how much things cost. And and this, this, when will we see the impacts of this plan? You know, a potential answer might be when the when the development code is released and you want to make a land use decision on your you or your community is making a land use decision.
Well, and could could we say specifics? This might be the wrong place to to do that educating. But the paths that there are, it's, we'll assume that people will want to have well, that many of the public will want to have housing available that can be affordable to people who are not wealthy of various different kinds, right? You might want to rent, you might want to buy. You might want a single-family unit. You might want to be part of a, you know, larger development. So 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 what are the pathways that are possible to get to those goals that the communities might have about having access to housing that they can afford to pay for?
Okay, but that raises the question, how much, how much power does the county have determining the cost of housing? There are so many factors outside the power of the county. I mean, look at lots of houses, but they're not cheap.
Right, and exactly. And and that's what I'm saying. There are pathways that exist currently that may or may not meet the needs of the communities. I I agree with you, Evelyn.
Building more houses does not necessarily lower the cost of houses.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part?
Building more houses does not necessarily lower the cost of housing.
Oh, of course, especially depending on what you build and where.
Et cetera.
Et cetera. Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the communication pieces that that there does take, we do need to do some more work with the consultants on clarifications that are I just want to overwork that that area in this document. Understand how much time to spend on it, because we really want to focus on what we're doing with other folks as opposed to internally explaining in this document what we're doing. So if that makes sense. Moving on to channels. On page 11, there's a table that talks about the use of word channels and just different types of media. Is there anything that's missing there? Again, this is high level.
With community groups? Is that too low a level? TomTom Networks?
I didn't, there needs to be a category that basically face to face.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good old fashioned way of communicating. Forgot all about it. Anything else? Okay, moving on, there's also other engagement and outreach activities, page 12. And that's where I think I've already made an explanation about it's the train the trainer activities. That's part of what the consultants are going to be doing with us and other folks who are interested in being facilitators. It's a to be developed. And that kind of brings us to the end of the outline. There are kind of final thoughts about this. I I have essentially 10 points. I will write up those notes, and when I send them to the consultants, I'll make sure I CC so that I capture them accurately. And you're welcome to send me additional comments. Now I'll send them right along to them for consideration, but we are trying to wrap up this phase of the process so that we can actually have a draft plan by the end of this month.
Next week.
Yeah. And like I said, there's a lot more meat and bones on the plan itself. This was just supposed to help guide us away from getting in the weeds.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Patriot. That was helpful.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was a little fumbly, had kind of jumped in on this today, so.
Always challenging to jump in on somebody else's slide deck. But we appreciate you representing the the work here and members of the planning commission didn't support, they were vocals, so. We appreciate the planning commission as well for that. The next topic is updates and both from community development as well as the planning commission. And Commissioner Fullford, did you want any time to update the group on your subcommittee? Is there anything that you'd like to provide there?
Sure, sure, just a couple of minutes. I I think should work. Right now, we're bringing probably to an end, I'll call it phase one, which is the socialization and exploring if housing is needed, right? We spoke to 44-plus groups, seven, some people, which is all good. I think we have Corvallis School District this week. Once that's done, we're presenting to the Board of Commissioners to, I'll say, recharter, reengage the next phase, which is the more the planning and actual execution piece of this, right? Once we get the relief blessings. So there's a budget period coming up in right now that we're outlining some costs for the next two years for Benton County Commissioners. I have met with each one of them individually and given them a pitch on it. So they're well aware. And, yeah, and we met with Dare Village today. They have a sort of a unique problem. They're on the north side of town. They need wastewater treatment more advanced and the coffin view things across the street. So there might be three, four different issues addressed with that approach, if we can do it, which will hopefully make the housing. Net net, we're finishing up one phase, starting to kick off the next phase. Hopefully, that will
Ed Spenden, he's done some great work in terms of the getting the the dialogue and discussion going. And a major effort within the next 30 days is to figure out how to engage formally the Board of Commissioners, the budgeting process. Getting it, getting this program into the list of priorities for the coming year and ensuring that the appropriate level of county resource is associated with this this program. And all of that is in large thanks to Commissioner Fullford and his work on on outreach. It's been really, really good. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Yes, thank you so much. And I would just like to say I am, as a member of the planning commission, I did not choose to be on that committee, but I I don't feel as though I understand the results. So I would like to see see your final report, too.
Oh, absolutely. We do have, I'll say, probably a third version of the draft for the final set that I presented to the Board of Commissioners. We can distribute that and let you know or understand where we're at, as well as the findings today. I think it summarizes it pretty good. There might be 20, 25 slides or something like that. But absolutely, we also, one of the things I think Catherine challenged us on was, hey, I was doing a lot of notes like this, right? And she wanted to digitize them. So we have a had a little tool that basically summarized each one of the discussions we had with all the various leaders in the region, and I have all those.
I think.
You know, I think that since you're going out and representing yourself as a member of the planning commission, really, I would like to see, I would like to see those results.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, we we definitely went down a path of collecting it as we went, and so we have those notes, have the slides, and we'd love to share. But you're right, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes where, you know, I don't stand up every day and say, hey, by the way, this is who we're with, and that's what we talked about. There's a lot, a lot of those meetings, a lot of those discussions, so.
Vice Chair Hayman, do you want to provide any updates on the codes of committee? Because that is tied into the comp plan review and update as well. And so that I'm really pleased to see the momentum building on the the comp plan and the code revisions.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Evelyn's comments are whoever's just, you know, certainly recognizing, and it took me a while to figure this out. I'll just admit that 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 this comprehensive plan work has to happen to inform that code work. So so you know, I think I at least initially tried to jump out the gate on the race and then like kind of recognize that there wasn't a race yet.
Well, and I think as make sure I get the title, interim director Sheets would would say is there's multiple pathways into the 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 code. Huge one is comp plan update. Another one are all of the statutory changes that have occurred over the time period since the code has been developed. And perhaps Ms. Sheets, you could update us on where that activity is right now.
Yeah, so pages at the top of page 25, 6, and 7 actually is a a table that summarizes all of the house bills that we chose to put into the first phase. Those are all the mandatory statutory requirements over the last 15 years that we've agreed to and have now signed on the dotted line that they're going to incorporate into our code. I'm going to try to actually squeeze in another one, but it's because I've been working with the state in a state work group on a house bill 2727, which was on citing of childcare facilities. I don't know if you've heard about this. This is kind of another big topic here over the last couple of years, and we found issues here in permitting where there's been a a requirement by the state that all all zones are required to allow childcare facilities, but there's a natural conflict because there's safety, like life safety licensing issues and land use issues associated with those. So when when we started trying to implement those things across those agencies, there became a lot of, like I said, conflicts. And so we've been working through this year with a number of recommendations to the state legislature to work on the Oregon administrative rules to help remedy those things. I had a presentation for the Association of Oregon Counties for tomorrow, but I don't want to go anymore. So but I have that presentation ready too. So that might be something that I could present to you all. So it's not wasted. No, I'll have other opportunities, but we've made a lot of progress and feel really good about that. And it was also just a great example, one of those few examples of a collaboration across the state with daycare facility caretakers, owners, state entities, counties and cities, all working together to come up with a set of recommendations. So it was just an example of a really good problem-solving exercise. So there's that, and if I just, the South Corvallis, Corvallis actually wanted me to give this information to you this evening, if that's okay. The South Corvallis area planning process, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but there are components of that are in the urban growth boundary fringe area, and they are having a workshop this Thursday at Lincoln School in South Corvallis from seven to nine, if you're interested in participating. They also have a pretty strong presence on their website that has a lot of background information, and the county is going to start being pretty involved in that process moving forward. And at some point, that'll probably be one of the topics that we talk about in this body policy-wise sometime next year. You might want to start looking at that piece. And then, of course, I sent out an email today about the fact that we are definitely going to be having a December 3 joint session on a zone change. It's not controversial. There doesn't seem to be any issues associated, highly administrative. However, logistically, it's it's curious. I just said, okay, well, just give me the last one, and I will, you know, cut and copy and help me with my findings and come to find out, they haven't had a joint planning commission between Corvallis and the county since 2004. So we are trying to recreate the wheel. So there's a lot of logistics that need to happen between now and next week, but you'll have that packet available to you next Tuesday.
And that meeting on the third, that's a quasi legislative action. And so our role as a planning commission will be a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on this particular proposal.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's also a core recommendation that's going to the city of Corvallis.
So it's also a co-recommendation that's going to the city of Corvallis as well, right?
It is. Yeah, so, so what you'll see generally, I think what's going to happen is that the county, the county being the larger body will facilitate the meeting. The city, a staff member, because it's their application, will be the staff that we're giving the presentation with the county support staff. Saying yes. And then we don't anticipate anything controversial from the public, which is fortunate. And then we will have joint deliberations. And then we facilitate a recommendation vote with this body, and then the chair of their planning commission would have their separate vote. And there's been a request by the city as well to share a couple of project updates with the county planning commission, which I think is fantastic. And we were even kind of throwing around the idea of doing this on a more regular basis so that we can share our projects status. So, yeah, it will be here. Yeah, so it'll be here.
Just a comment on more of a question on process. You all may recall that when we had our last quasi legislative action, which was the expansion of the urban growth boundary of the city of Adair. For the deliberative portion of that, we actually did split into the city of Adair and county separately. Because there were some discussion topics within that broader topic that we wanted more time within the, the county. As I've looked at this one, as Ms. Sheets has said, it does not appear to be controversial. I didn't see anything in it which would necessitate breaking into two different deliberative sessions, but I did want to check with the group if, make sure everyone's okay with a joint deliberative session. I think it makes sense with, with this one.
Yes, I, I'm okay with that.
So that's exactly how it was described. We'll, we'll plan to do a joint deliberative session for, for this one.
Third, 6 p.m. here.
Now, I looked at the city of Corvallis website, because I hadn't looked at their planning commission in a long, long time. It does appear, at least if their website is current, that they have a number of vacancies. And it's a fairly small group at this point, so I don't want to overwhelm them, because I think there's only three or four. Positions that are filled on the, the Corvallis Planning Commission. And, and so we will, we will be eight if everyone participates from the county, plus four from the, from the city. So it won't be a huge group in here. But it'll be a, a good time to, to meet with them, and I welcome the opportunity to do some project sharing. It would be nice to, to hear about that.
What, what time did you say?
It's our normal meeting time, 6 p.m. in the, the room in which we currently sit, or the Zoom capability will also be available if remote participation is desired.
Thank you.
Any further updates from community development? No crystal ball on when we might see workers coming back to.
There was an optimistic operations briefing this afternoon.
Excellent. Good to hear. Any updates? Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, Chair Fowler, thank you. Well, based on the unofficial results from the past election, I am the presumptive city councillor-elect for Ward 4 in Adair. I'll be sworn in in January. Our meetings, the, the city of Adair meets per charter on the first Tuesday of every month. And so I would like to be able to continue my service on the planning commission. I know that meetings may, we may end up having numerous meetings, starting after the first of the year, it would be my guess. And so if I were absent from a meeting, it would only be because of my obligations for the city.
Understood, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
I did send out an email to the planning commission with respect to, I think what Commissioner Wilson was referring to is the application from Republic Services. I do believe. The 30-day investigation of completeness is coming up right around the 3rd of December. And, and so we'll, we'll know more, and perhaps we can. Get a, a confirmation whether or not that application is deemed complete, because once the application is deemed complete, it, it does begin a regimented set of timelines that we need to, to adhere to. But I wouldn't expect, and, you know, we don't know, because we, we haven't started the, the analysis, but I wouldn't expect any action on our part until February. Is that consistent with? And, and so we, we would expect to, to have it in our court sometime in, in February, and as we had previously. Had a couple of conversations, we've confirmed with county council that we can notice. Multiple meetings at once for public, initial public hearing on gathering public comment if we continue to anticipate significant public comment. And so we can notice once for consecutive meetings so that we can have the, the opportunity for the public to comment. Over multiple evenings. And so as we know more about the specific schedule, we'll start to lay out the, the process that we need. Because we need to take action and still leave room for any sort of appeal to the Board of Commissioners.
Chair Fowler, I just have a quick logistical question, and, and I'm going to pose this hypothetical, because I don't want to speak specifically to. A particular application that's coming up, but in, in complex, and maybe. Ms. Sheets can answer this as well. In complex applications such as this, when we get to the point where we're being asked to digest and process the community developments report. And I'm assuming like previous reports that we've received and been advised by the Community Development Department, that they. Will make a recommendation for something this complex, and we digest that, and then it goes to public hearings. I, or on something that's, because I think the most complex thing I've worked on this year is just, was the recent. A conditional use permit that was a change for the church. Sorry, that's a big mouthful, sorry.
I, I think it's a professional responsibility to provide a recommendation.
So what we would anticipate is getting the staff report roughly one week in advance of the first public hearing. The staff report would be presented at our first public hearing. And as we discussed over the summer on a complex one where we anticipate lots of questions from all of the planning commissioners. I'll give each of you as much time uninterrupted to interact with the staff report. And then move on to the next planning commissioner and so forth, so you can maintain your train of thought and so forth. And then after that, it goes to the applicant for, for interaction, than other governmental agencies, actually, they have those reversed, and then we'll open it up to the public. And it's that open to the public, which on a very complex application could extend multiple evenings. And since we're going to be on a restricted timeline, we will notice at least two public hearings so that we can have them in close proximity and not use up too much of the 150-day clock. For that public input.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I was, I would, the only question was that, like in that previous. Application, we moved to keep the record open, so in order to have multiple public hearings, are we then moving to keep the record open to continue, or do you have to do that? I don't, I'm just asking.
Yeah, and then even beyond that, we would anticipate and actually put it into our schedule that there would be requests from either the public or the applicant to keep the record open beyond those public hearing dates. And so we would probably hold the record open for seven more days for written comment. Then we have to give the applicant time to respond to all of the assembled record. At which time everything would be closed. And on this particular application, or any very complex application, I think it behooves us to have about a week. So that we individually can read the record and review the record before coming into deliberations. Because I would expect the record to be voluminous on some of these complex cases. And so then we come back in a public hearing context for deliberations. And then the deliberations would be obviously in, in the public hearing. But we would have some time between the close of the record and the public hearing, so individually, we, we can't talk to each other, but individually, we can absorb all of the record.
So all of that is very clear. There is just one question, and I think you mentioned it when we discussed this schedule in the past. We have individually. At the first hearing, we have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff. And we have an uninterrupted period to ask all of our questions. Do we have another period if another? Planning commission's questions raise additional questions?
Absolutely. What I would anticipate is going kind of around each of the, the planning commissioners to exhaust their initial questions.
I see.
And then at the end, have it more like we typically do where it's interrupt basis.
Okay.
I'll recognize whoever has additional question, and it can be made to the staff or the applicant, and, and at the very end. We always have that catch-all where the planning commission has the opportunity to ask questions of any of the, the testimony. Before we close the record, and that'll be on a, as a recognized basis. I don't think we need to dedicate time to each planning commissioner for that. Does that sound like a reasonable process?
Yes, thank you for the explanation, Chair Fowler. I appreciate it.
Very good. But again, we don't expect to, to have the Republic Services application in, in our domain until February. So with the initial application having been deemed incomplete, the 150-day clock starts exactly when, when it's deemed complete. So even though this is the second go-around, and so 150-day clock will start on or around, presuming it's being complete, early December. And then 60 days or so for the professional staff and consultants to review it before it comes into our purview.
Yeah, and I, I believe it came in July 19th originally, so they have six months after incompleteness to get whatever information they want in. Then they need to make a decision whether or not we move forward with the information that they've provided or not provided, or they withdraw.
Okay.
So that's January 19th.
But we'll imminently know as to whether it's deemed complete.
Right, yeah, they, they've put in. More analysis. That the, and if you're interested in getting started and looking at the materials, it's all posted on the, the Benton County website. Front page, yeah.
Very good. Anything else from community development, the planning commission?
Quick question. I believe the last hearing that we, we considered was the church and that they appealed, or someone appealed. Does anybody have an update on the status of that?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. They, they appealed to Luba. We objected to the validity of an appeal to Luba because it started as an administrative review, and that means it should stop at planning commission. From my interpretation, legal counsel agrees. They have asked us for some additional materials in the record. Legal counsel and myself disagree that those documents should be in the record, so now we're going back and forth on the legal record. So this could go on for months. Oh, I see, okay. Sorry, that's okay.
Very well. I believe that there's no other business. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Fowler. Good night, everybody.